Mike, do you want to come up and introduce yourself, please?
I am Mike Briggs. I live at Garrish Township in Higgins Lake. And I'm on the Roscommon Economic Development Committee right now. I've been on there for two years and just wanted to introduce myself to those who don't know yet. I submitted a letter and my background information for consideration for another reappointment. I'm also on the Brownsville Redevelopment Authority Board as well here. I'm with several other committees, but if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mike, you've been on this board already, so this is not something new that you're going to have to learn, right?
Right. They say in some of these things, it takes you about six months to feel comfortable, a year before you feel like you know what you're doing, and two years before anybody listens to you. Leaving three.
Thank you. Thank you.
Rich, do you want to say hi?
I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Yes.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Rich Castle. I'm the Community Affairs Manager for Consumers Energy, based out of our Towahatchee office, but I cover eight counties here in the Northeast Region, including Roscommon County. And I've been on the Economic Development Committee Corporation for the last three years. And so I've submitted a request to renew my position on the board. And just want to say that I've enjoyed working with, you know, obviously all of you, but working with the EDC, you know, for the past couple of years, it's been a great opportunity to get to better know Roscommon County as well as our businesses. And, you know, just looking forward to being able to, you know, make the community, you know, a better place. So that's why I'm interested in being a member again. So, and similarly, I'm open to any questions if you have any.
Anyone have any questions? Yes.
I've known Mr. Castle for years. He's been in front of the board several times. He's an exceptional candidate. And I appreciate his willingness to continue to serve.
Thank you.
Also, as a liaison for Consumers Power, he's always been very good at keeping us abreast of things.
I would agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my understanding that Tracy was going to be here, so something must have come up. You're all familiar with her, but if you're not, we could try to have her come in two weeks, or we can move forward with her reappointment as well. So I just need to know the direction so we can get the motions to Joe. I'm fine with moving forward with her on there unless...
Yeah, we all know her.
I've known Tracy for twenty-five years.
Okay.
Questions before you... I know, but do you have questions about that we can help answer if you want before we... But you're okay with proceeding with her then?
Next is the proposed GIS fee schedule. Administrator Controller Jody Valentino.
So this is really just a housekeeping administrative change that I wanted to present to you so that you guys are in the know. We have a limited geographic information services, that's what GIS stands for, department kind of back up and running right now, doing remotely. When looking at what our current fees are for services, maps, charges, et cetera, it came to the attention that our total costs didn't equate out for the per township costs. So this is simply making that change from the 2024 per township costs to represent the basic division of eleven into those individuals. So the per township cost will be seven fifty per township for the eighteen by twenty-four map and twenty-four by thirty-six small tube maps will go up to nine hundred. The large map tubes themselves will be one eighty. Layout pages are going to be sixty dollars. And then the small maps per township will end up being one hundred dollars. So, and that is inclusive of time and material. If you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Is that map, a new map every year?
They could get a new map every year. That would be if you request that as a...
Don't things change every year?
They do. So they would have to still ask for a new map of all of those things.
That'd be another seven fifty?
Yes.
What about possibility of just sending out some updates?
I'm sure they could arrange something if they wanted.
To keep the cost down to the township.
So we have some, we do have some townships that only would want maybe a certain set of the parcels. And then we could easily just divide that up by the total charge based on the amount of square footage that they're looking for for township.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
So are these costs or the, these are the fees that we would charge, are they just covering our costs?
They are. They're just covering our costs.
Okay.
And what I did was I had Jenna go through and she reviewed our neighboring townships that also offer GIS services to make sure that we were in line and not above what the others are as well.
I looked at those and they're not super surrounding us. Like, does Crawford above us not do GIS?
They do not.
Interesting.
So interestingly enough, we have several of the smaller counties that outsource GIS. And so, for instance, we actually had that this year. And if we were to ask to have a map made, let's say, for the purpose of economic development or brownfield, the cost of that actually ends up being about double what we could do if we have it in-house because we're using a large...
Kind of thing, right? Because I noticed some of the other comparisons, like Midland County, those are large counties. And when you look at the comparison of fees, so I just wanted to make sure that we're at least covering costs, but we're not trying to really recoup a lot of extra for that. So, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Community Wildfire Defense Grant Emergency Management Director Vanessa Barner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So I have been working with Nia Moses Becker and Julie Crick. Nia is with Dovetail Nonprofits, based out of Traverse City. They have expertise in community wildfire protection plans. And the Community Wildfire Defense Grant, I apologize, my voice is a little cracked. I'm, I don't know if I'm coming down with something or what I've got going on, so bear with me, please. But what we're doing is we are currently in the process of completing the application for the Community Wildfire Defense Grant to rewrite our community wildfire protection plan. Dovetail is a nonprofit organization that assists in helping organizations with these sorts of projects. They do community support, they do grant assistance, they do implementation guidance. One of their goals is to help in Michigan with getting community wildfire protection plans updated and rewrite new, and write new ones. I'm not going to bore you with reading through this. This was in the packet. But ultimately, a community wildfire protection plan is a plan that outlines local priorities for wildfire risk mitigation. It's important because this is what essentially sets the plan for how we want to reduce our wildfire risk and identifies the projects that we want to complete to be able to apply for future project grants. The planning process that we have identified is a twelve-month process and will consist of a group of experts, fire, and forestry, ecological management. The Community Wildfire Defense Grant is a nationally competitive grant that can be used for a variety of purposes, specifically developing and revising a community wildfire protection plan and then implementing the projects of that plan. We're looking at using it for the revision part of it. Applicants get priority if they're considered high wildfire potential, a low-income community, and they have a wildfire risk that's identified by severe disaster. We meet the criteria for all three of those. So we actually are going to fall within the zero-match category and can apply for a grant waiver to not have to have anything towards the fifty thousand dollars that we're applying for. So the ninety-three point nine percent is the number of homes that are at risk of wildfire in the community. We meet the low-income criteria. And then because of oak decline and drought, we satisfy the severe disaster requirement as well as the jackpine budworm is in the spongy moth invasive species issues. So that's the information from Nia that she provided. There's also some information about how long it takes to create community wildfire protection plans, why they're important, the estimated cost they're projected in working with the DNR. I met with them on Monday. They're projecting the cost to be about fifty thousand dollars to get this completed. And again, there would be no cost locally to the county. It would all come through the Community Wildfire Defense Grant. And then there's just a little bit more information on the protection plan. And I did include in your packet a copy of our draft application, but I wanted to pull up what our projected budget is looking like. So there'd be approximately ten thousand dollars allocated for personnel and labor for an individual to coordinate and collaborate with all of the stakeholders and the contractor and consultants. Thirty-five hundred for benefits approximately, fifteen hundred allocated for mileage, and then thirty-five thousand for the contractual costs.
Does anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair, I do have just a few, one, a couple comments. Obviously, it's great that we fit all those priorities to, so it's a no-matching grant that has to come out of her budget. So do we, did I hear you correctly, Vanessa? We have one of these already and it's to redo it, or is this brand-new for us?
So we have a plan that was written in 2016. Our plan's actually expired, so this is to update it.
Okay, all right. And this fits within your strategic plan now that we have the mileage passed? Is this kind of in your, what you want to accomplish in the next several years?
This has historically been an emergency management's wheelhouse, yes.
Gotcha, okay. Personnel and labor, are you going to have to hire somebody? Do you have somebody in mind if this gets awarded, or you're going to have to, is that going to be a hard find?
What my hope is, is that the part-time person that I'm bringing on would be able to pick up these responsibilities. And this would be a... And then once the project ends, this would also end.
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you for getting that presentation to us in advance. That was very helpful. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry I couldn't be there in person.
Next, we have Zoom discontinuation available on YouTube, discussion of the whole.
I apologize. Mark and I, we've been around for quite a few years. And before COVID, that's how we used to do it, have our meetings. A few days later, go on YouTube. If anybody had questions, they would contact us. I'm in favor for this, you know, the upcoming laws, it's going to save us money. That's just my feelings.
I know with the new requirements that are being mandated in regards to the ADA, American Disability Act, that it has to be, you know, we have to make some decisions. By discontinuing Zoom, it doesn't mean that we're not being transparent. I know a lot of people have been throwing that word out there. We're still being transparent because we're still recording the meetings. They're still available to watch. The main difference is that the people on Zoom would not be able to give us public comment during the meeting. However, we don't answer public comment anyway. And they still have access to us whether we're here in the office, which I'm hoping will be more, will have more office time in there. But they can contact us by phone, they can contact us by email and things of that nature. So... Yes.
I am not in favor of Zoom, Zoom discontinuation. You know, we talk about transparency, but we really have to do it. You know, this morning, we had Mr. Castle and Vanessa on. They're on Zoom. So we're shorting ourselves an opportunity to listen to two people on Zoom today. If we don't have Zoom, I want to hear from the public. And if they see us in a meeting, I think it's important for them to interact with us. I think the Zoom discontinuation is absurd. I think we should continue with Zoom because I think it's important for people to be able to listen to what we have to say. You know, we have closed, do we have closed caption capability? I'm not sure. If I'm asked a question, I should know the answer. Bottom line is Vanessa came on Zoom this morning, Mr. Castle came on Zoom this morning. We're shorting ourselves an opportunity to be able to hear from the public. So I think we should continue with Zoom. I mean, you know, it's great that the lawmakers continue to throw more laws. I mean, I probably can't keep my horse tied to a pole with, you know, the village of Roscommon for thirty minutes without getting a ticket. They keep throwing more laws on the books. The bottom line, we should continue with Zoom. It's transparency of the government. One of our strategic plans is transparency. If we get rid of Zoom, we allow ourselves not the opportunity for the public to hear what we have to say.
So Commissioner Milburn, you talk about transparency. So does that mean every committee meeting that you go to that doesn't offer Zoom isn't being transparent?
Say that. I think that we do it here as commissioners. I think the public needs to hear what we have to say.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Zoom has nothing to do with transparency. We're holding a meeting in the open public, and it is recorded and it is accessible. We are hiding nothing. And like the chairman said, we're not able to respond to the people that make comment, public comment during Zoom. So, you know, it's no different than if they send us a letter. At least if they send us a letter, we can respond to it.
And we have it on file.
Zoom complications that we're going to encounter if we don't get rid of it for the ADA Act goes far beyond the monetary cost. If we can't get an interpreter or signer that on the day of that meeting, we have to schedule our meetings according to them. If we schedule a meeting and they call in a half hour before the meeting and say, oh, we can't be there, what do we do? Cancel the meeting? You know, it's just, the logistics of making it work is just astounding.
Which kind of negates the transparency conversation. I know that many people who've been on Zoom who've complained that they can't even hear. So how is that transparent on Zoom if they can't hear?
It's on YouTube.
They can watch it when they, when they can. If it's costing us money going forward, in my mind, I would rather spend that money towards our staff and our people that we need, infrastructure that's critical. If we are doing our jobs as commissioners and we're in the public and we are talking to people, we're going to our township meetings, if they've heard it, we don't vote for another two weeks, then we have that opportunity because we're not doing anything behind closed doors. That's what the Open Meetings Act is about. Transparency, that you don't make decisions behind closed doors. They're videoed, and the issue that's going to come before us, and we're not the only group dealing with this. In my own township in Garrish, they're addressing this as well. They had somebody hack in and do something very vulgar on the screen. Now they've got to come up with new ways to protect that hack and pay more money. I just think it's going down a rabbit hole. I think the commissioners were very transparent even without a Zoom meeting. Unless you feel that you weren't. I don't think that's the reason for...
I don't disagree that we've been transparent. I just think that once we've established this as a benchmark, I think it's important to continue. But the bottom line, as I mentioned Vanessa this morning, how would she have been able to give a report unless she was on Zoom?
We would have, we'd come back.
I think it's just an added, it adds value to what we tried to do. And I think maybe the public doesn't quite fully cognizant of the fact that this deals with ADA, American Disabilities Act. I think, Madam Chair, maybe you could illuminate that a little bit.
So the American Disabilities Act came through, from my understanding, and there's going to be new laws and requirements for anybody that does the digital accessibility, especially when it comes to government. From my understanding, there's going to have to be closed caption. There's going to have to be an interpreter slash signer that is here at every meeting that's able to sign. There's complications with that of, one, if the interpreter can't understand or hear one of us, how are they going to be able to keep up? We can't control the people that talk on Zoom and their internet connection. And there's times where there's people that come in and they're in and out, yet the signer has to sign whatever's going on. So there's a variety of complications. And not just that, you have to talk about equipment updates. We'll have a variety of equipment updates that we would have to do. And the funds for that just aren't there.
Madam Chair, Zoom was created during COVID. So public entities could conduct business remotely. COVID's gone. It's done. And just because our Zoom didn't go away, I mean, that's, we're catching up to that finally, that do away with it. I think there's a big difference between someone attending a meeting by way of Zoom to introduce themselves that we've invited versus the public is invited by Zoom. I think there's a big difference when it comes to your ADA rulings. I mean, when you're inviting the public, now the ADA rules kick in. So I'm offered, you know, eliminating it. But I also want to make everybody aware that we are accessible to the public.
And I don't think a lot of people realize it's even on YouTube, to be honest. I mean, I think if you follow us closely, you're following us closely, whether it's there or on YouTube. But there's a lot of people who don't even know it's available. And I think as long as that is recorded and we are doing our jobs, we're learning our microphones better so that we can be heard, that is the purpose for our Open Meetings Act. We have got to make sure that the people can hear and know the dialogue and the conversation before us. It's irrelevant whether it's Zoom, in-person, an email, or here in an office where people can come and talk to us. I prefer, if there is truly an issue and we can't, we, I like the feedback, have our public comment, but if we don't interact, there is more benefit for me to have that conversation with you, Mark, face-to-face so that I understand it. Because some of the frustration becomes, in a public comment, which we do, where's the feedback? People get mad that we don't respond, but that's how the meeting works. I'd much rather have the conversation with you so I truly understand the problem. And what solution are you bringing to the table so that we can have the conversation? This is what matters more than that to me, especially when the costs are going to start coming down, that we're going to have a very difficult time keeping that up when it's not a part of Open Meetings Act. That's my take. I mean, I know we're not voting on that today, but that's, it's a tough call, but I think it's needed.
I want to appreciate the good dialogue that we're having here. But I still, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, I believe Zoom is important for transparency.
Any other questions or concerns or comments? Two weeks. Next, we have over-budget policy discussion of the whole. I know that we spoke about developing a policy like this last year. I think a policy like this will also help the, our controller, administrator when it comes to different departments and people going over budget. It's going to help us become more fiscally responsible. It's going to give Jody direction and things like that and set expectations for our strategic plan and things like that. That's my opinion on that, but I'm open to...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think it's a good idea. If we have an over-budget policy, it should make our administrator's job easier. I mean, she just refers to the policy and that's the end of the story.
It's imperative that we have this put into place, imperative.
I would totally agree. And it goes to our, one of our goals and objectives is to go through all the policies that we currently have so that we're aware of them, so that we make the right decisions. And if we don't have one, I think it's an important one to follow. Yeah. Is that going to be drafted and we'll have a chance to review it?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Subcontractor policy discussion of the whole. Commissioner Wilson, I believe you brought this one to the table.
In looking over our policy stuff, I fail to see anything about subcontractors and contracts. And especially is, I don't see anything where they have to furnish a liability insurance. Then, you know, to me, that may be an important thing. To the others, I don't know. And also, I think perhaps all contracts with the county should be at least brought to the board's attention. I don't know. What do you guys think?
Well, first of all, with liability insurance, I agree a hundred percent. I, in the past, we were that same shoe. Even if we, it's in our packet, you know, just to browse and look at that, there was a contract signed with Jody and Bill and maintenance or something. At least we see what it's about and how much money.
Any other questions, comments?
Bring it forward. Thank you.
While we're on that topic, I was in business for forty-five years. Walmart wanted to be listed as additional insured. I refused to do so.
They could.
No, I still worked for them for ten years. My opinion always was, everybody buys their own insurance. Technically, it don't feel like Walmart doesn't have to buy any insurance. If every person that works for them has to furnish million-dollar liability, listing them as additional insureds, they don't have to buy insurance. They're covered by everybody else. So I always thought that was a nonfair practice, but I don't know how you guys feel on that. I thought it was sufficient that someone supplies liability insurance.
Yeah. It only makes sense.
I mean, maybe we ought to ask Jody on this a little bit.
So, super easy, MMRMA, who is our liability insurance. Actually, I had a meeting with a gentleman yesterday, and so we talked a little bit. They have the standard recommendations that you should have a minimum of for liability. We use that in our purchasing policy, so taking that and putting that in. It is not a requirement that you be listed as an additional insured. Um, it is not a requirement that you be listed as an additional insured because let's face it, people can sue who they want to sue no matter what insurance you have or don't have.
Jody, is that, are you saying it's similar to our purchasing policy, but it would be, would they be?
It would be a separate policy.
Separate policy?
Yeah.
Like a policy that we would make?
Specific, um Commissioner Wilson and I talked a little bit this week about it as well. And one of the other portions that I would ask be included is the requirement, um, it, it is an IRS requirement, we already practice it in our office, but to put it into the subcontractor policy, um, if you do not provide us with your W nine, um, then we will not provide you with a check because we need to be able to not only check your insurance, but ensure that you are sole proprietor, independent contractor, we have to be able to verify that you are a legal business entity before we do business with you.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I did business with the county in the past and I had to provide all that.
Plus, when it comes time to send out 1099s, we're not looking for information.
That's right.
I, I, I'm looking forward to seeing both of those, the over budget policy and the subcontractor policy for review. Yeah.
Absolutely. Any other questions regarding that? With no other questions, this meeting is adjourned and the next meeting starts at 10 o'clock. The Roscommon County Board of Commissioners meeting at 10 a.m. February 12th, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Morley.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Censor.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Madam Chair, during the work session, Mr. Wilson made a comment in regard to what he was, his, his position. I heard a comment, a negative comment from a public person. Uh, this board is always respectful to the public, always, always. Matter of fact, I've demanded throughout the years that we, I also asked that the public demand the same respect that we provide them. I will not put up or permit, this board should not permit nor the public body disrespectful comments from the public ever. That's my comment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Milburn, I would agree with that. Um, the talk that goes on out in the public body while some people are talking is not going to be tolerated. We, we respect them and they need to respect what goes on here.
I'm going to circle this back to our work session on our goals. You talk about transparency and I made it pretty evident that transparency goes both ways. When the public becomes disrespectful, but expects whomever, whether it's us, a school board, a township, to be respectful, it's got to be both ways. And that will shut down comments amongst the people that are elected. Because now you don't want to have a comment because somebody is going to be so nasty in the audience. That doesn't work both ways. We need to be respectful, therefore the audience has to be respectful as well. So I 100% agree.
Thank you, Mark.
Call roll please.
Censor.
Yes. Wilson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda. Before we do approve the consent agenda, I know that we did get an update on um our finance report that came in late yesterday. I was able to go over that information and just to let everybody know, I am still okay with approving class A's and claims and accounts with that updated. Um, the items that were in the consent agenda include meeting minutes from January 22nd, 2025 board meeting, class A's in the amount of $1,882,390.86 in claims and accounts in the amount of $162,456.80. We had correspondence from Namska, letters to the board regarding prices of eggs, MSU regarding the Northern Michigan Counties meeting, EDC letters and appointments, Rust Hemen Township Association bylaws and minutes, um, the newsletter from the Higgins Lake Property Owners Association, MAC legislative updates, Eagle correspondence regarding Forest Dunes Golf Club, um, EDC Michigan Works regarding a workshop with Eagle with renewable energy, MSU expansion, DNR zoning review, and the EDC Director's Report, monthly department reports, the sheriff activity report for January, animal control and shelter stats for January, Administrator Controller Report, and the clerk register updates. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Second.
Please call roll. Wilson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have public comment for agenda items only. Agenda items are what is actually on this agenda, not any previous agendas. Do we have any public comment? Okay. Do we have any visitors?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, we're not able to take public comment from Zoom at this time, is that correct?
That is correct. Andy had an emergency, Andy's the one who works Zoom and due to his family emergency, there is no Zoom currently. Um, unfinished business, Earn Sick Time Act policy. We all got a copy of the new policy, um, and we were also asked to make any considerations or concerns and give them um to Jody. does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the new policy?
I think the information that I got combined from all of our comments into the new reflects what we need to do with the new law coming forward. I think it blended and didn't, if I understand it correctly, tell me if I don't, Jody, that it didn't diminish anything that we currently offer to our employees, it just made sure that we were in compliance?
Generally, yes, that is what it did. Um, I do want to remind you guys that right now for our contract employees, our union employees, that this is not applicable unless they end up with a new contract or negotiate a new contract. However, uh, the one portion of it that I kind of had some questions on, and it's more of a wording issue, um, one of the things that we really want to try to avoid is misuse. Um, and you're not going to, you're not going to be able to avoid all misuse, obviously, but trying to figure out a, a way to alleviate, obviously, if I were to be terminal with cancer and I'm off on medical leave, um, and I still have a sick time balance off and I resign, we want to honor that person, we want to be able to, to let them cash out at their termination of employment, just like everybody else. Um, but trying to find a balance between doing that and people who decide that they want to use sick leave um up until retirement type of a thing. So there is that one caveat of that wordage in there that I'm just not 100% sure what that sounds like or what that looks like. Um, and that is on the third page. So my thought was right now to, to strike that and then come back maybe with some different language as we move forward.
I'd be in favor of relooking at that wording and making sure that we have feedback from departments and whatnot, like did we miss something? Cause we don't live this every day as commissioners, so um if we have something to change, if we can put this on another agenda, once we get another rendition, you know, addition of it, um, I'd like to make sure that I've done my due diligence as well, making sure that where does it hit us, you know, as a, as a county and how does that impact our employees? It's my thoughts.
I would agree with that. I think that it's important to get the wording correct and make sure that we have the, any input that we need and because it's directly going to affect the employees that we have here. Any other comments?
You probably did.
We will um start the accrual for everybody um on the 21st for the new employees until the policy is passed.
Okay.
Which gives Noel and I some time to kind of monkey around and BSNA in the payroll system and figure out what that looks like too.
That was my next question, just to make sure, I know we have a deadline when that goes into effect.
Yeah.
Make sure we have time on our agendas before that goes into effect.
Yeah, so we can just automatically add that on under the law. Um, and then we'll come back and, and take care of all of this as well.
Next is the fund balance policy. Um, again, we were all supplied with a draft and were requested to make any comments or concerns. Um, does anybody have any comments or questions regarding the fund balance policy? I think it's a great addition and revision to our policy. It gives us direction on how and what we want to do with the general fund. I think it's a positive move for us to be able to stay fiscally sound while we're moving forwards in regards to much needed capital improvements down the road.
Yeah, sorry. Kim, you want to go?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, it, can I use the word transparency, let's the public know what we're trying to do, let's employees know what we're trying to do and it gets, it guides the controller and allows the boards, you know, to, to know exactly what we're doing. It's, it's imperative that we have this, this, uh, this, this fiscal policy in place. Can't say strongly enough that how important this is.
Anybody else?
I think the fund balance is something that unless you've lived it in this type of world is difficult for people to understand. Um, it is a savings, it is for things that we need help on, infrastructure, things like that, how, how you use that savings like you would do in your own personal, you know, life. And it's because it's called a fund balance, sometimes people in the community, at least in my experience on school board, don't understand what that's actually designed to do. They just think it's free money that can be spent and it's not. So having it in a policy, um, and the fact that we will be reviewing policies on a continual basis to make sure if changes need to be made, I'm, I'm glad we have one.
Oh, definitely. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I also like the idea of um seeing what the fund balance is to be used for, if we need to use it.
Next, we have a new business, which currently we don't have anything listed. Um, so motions and resolutions whenever the clerk is ready. Motion number one, move to appoint the following employees to the Roscommon County Wage and Salary Committee for term beginning January 1, 2025 through December 31st, 2025. Eli Darso as representative for juvenile probation, family court, Will Tarrant for animal control program, Kim Kersey Prosecutor's Office, Dakota Darso for Sheriff's Office, Terry Muse Me for Clerk ROD Office, Rhonda Bell Treasurer's Office, Susie Stein from Central Filing, and Nicole Lehman for District Court.
So move.
Second, any discussion?
I just have a question and I'm the new person, so bear with me. If I understand the Wage and Salary Committee, because these aren't department heads, which I understand that decision, um, that these people have an interest in how those wage and salaries affect the rest of those people in their departments, right? So it's not necessarily they have to have a ton of budget experience because it's more about where do the wage ranges run? Did I, am I understanding that correctly?
She did.
Okay, all right.
Yes, and so we also have, um, our HR journalist actually runs it as well so that you have another, somebody that has knowledge and understanding, but doesn't have the authority making, so that you're keeping it more on an even keel again of having guidance, um, you know, still looks at it kind of the same as well. And it keeps another boss out of the picture or the commissioner out of the picture.
Cause it's kind of not really talking about budget, it's about what we should be doing wage and salaries.
Yes.
Benefits, does adding, does that go into that?
Yeah, we're, it's getting, it's getting the input from the employees. Um, and it goes to give them a little bit of an understanding to, to get like, hey, these, this is the box that we're operating in, which pieces, you know, need to come into this, what are the most important parts? And I think once you guys finish your strategic plan, that'll be very helpful for them as well, to utilize that and see how.
As a guide.
Yep.
Thank you.
Roll call please. Milburn.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Motion carried. Motion number two, move to appoint Brian Hill to the Roscommon County E911 Authority Board for a three-year term beginning 212, 2025 through 930, 2028.
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Censor.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn. Motion carried. Motion number three, move to reappoint Wei Lozinski to the Roscommon County E911 Authority Board for a three-year term beginning 212, 2025 through 930, 2028.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call. Morley.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried. Committee reports. Um, Commissioner Marley. Oh, I didn't have a number four, I'm sorry.
I don't have a four.
I don't have a four.
I have a four. Well, we don't have a quarter on that.
What's your four?
Um, yeah, Prime New Hope.
No, that's on, uh, the Horton Lake.
Yeah, the lake.
The lake levels, I mean Higgins Lake, lake levels, that got moved. Yep.
You made us move that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not off my shoes.
There's always that guy.
Committee report.
Yes.
Um, the Central Michigan District Health Department, both Commissioner Milburn and I, I went to my first meeting with him on that on the 22nd. There were several people in that that I've reconnected with from my past job, so that was kind of a nice, it's just nice to see those people again and what they're working on in that department. And they had their own struggles as well with some of the things that come down from our state that are impacting their decisions and what services that they can provide. So it was nice to be joining them for that first meeting. Northern Lakes, Michigan, um, you know, mental health authority. Mr. Al Cambridge, who also serves on that with me, sat down over lunch. Gave me a lot of time and gave me a lot of history and background on that and reading through all the past notes that were in the office when I took over. So I will be serving on their policy committee, so we'll be having a meeting this week on that. There is a lot to be done in that group around a forensic audit of the expenses that have happened. So it will be lively way to step in. There's media's there. It's, 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 it's quite fun. Emergency management, I met with Vanessa a little bit to understand some of the needs. She's got a part-time position she's trying to fill. What does that look like? Do you have enough candidates and things like that? And the need to have a public information officer, and I agreed to do that. And that, I have to give Vanessa our time because she didn't tell me how much work that was and all the certification. But I will be going through that to help us be our PIO for emergency management. Higgins Lake or Higgins Township had a meeting on the 3rd that we went to. There was no old or new business at that meeting. But they did have a lot of questions from the public about the solar project. Once again, as I have shared with them, this is on hold. Circle Power has not been moving forward at this point. I think they're letting the dust settle at the state level and all the feedback that's been going on even in Gaylord. So right now, but they are moving forward to protect themselves and to have, you know, things within their policies that if it comes forward, it will help. I also met with the Victim Services Unit on the 10th. I thanked them for the work they did above and beyond when the Spruce Fire happened. I heard that they really did a fantastic job. But better yet, I learned a lot more about really what their need is and what their purpose is. We have wonderful fire and police and all that that come. But what about the person who's not getting that attention? The parent or the, you know, if your child has died. It was very moving. And one of the things I think the public should also know is those people go through so much. But because of our EAP program that the Sheriff's Department's put together, those people get support too. I can't imagine going to all those calls and having to help someone who's gone through that. So they're all self-funded through their one fundraiser, so they don't take any money from groups or agencies. They all fund themselves and they're a great group of volunteers, so I just wanted to give a little shout out to them. Spent some time, I was on the Garrish Fire Chief interview panel, so they do have a new fire chief that will be selected, that has been selected. And gave an award to the Cross Country Ski Headquarters on behalf of MSU's extension to their family for 45 years of a program for the youth in our area to cross-country ski. So that was my, that's my report.
Commissioner Russo.
Good report. I attended Longo Rex, the Sable River Watershed, the DNR for hearing. Any construction that goes on, they have to come in front of us. And it's a panel where we allow it, deny it, or do different setbacks. So we did go to that hearing. Also, I'd like to mention Brian Hill is the new chair for the 911 Authority Board. Yeah. Thank you.
Um, we had an agenda meeting that I actually attended via phone due to some work commitments that I had. I also attended the Dent Township meeting on February 5th. Um, they are actually going to be implementing BSNA throughout all departments there. Supervisor Dunbor has spoken with BSNA and currently they were operating too different and they were trying to reconcile and it just takes hours and hours. So they're going to actually use it through all departments and get on board there. There was also a Michigan Works meeting and I was not able to do, to attend that one due to work. So that's what I have. Commissioner Wolfson.
All right, if I speak now?
Yes.
I went to the Sable River Natural Rivers meeting with David. And we did approve a variance for a person. I do have copies of the minutes for that meeting and one prior for the clerk. Also, on the 4th, I went to Crawford, a Crawford, Roscommon Conservation District meeting because that's what hazardous waste is now run through. Hazardous Waste Committee is applying for a $3,000 grant for disposing tires. They had received that grant last year. They have not received it yet this year. Hopefully, maybe that'll come through. Their collection date is May 31st for this year. From nine to one. Also. It's at the Road Commission also, just like. And that's good that, you know, the Road Commission allows them to use that facility because it encompasses a lot and they need a lot of space and the different stations and stuff.
Works out perfect all the way around.
Also, for the materials management planning. It came down last week that we needed to have a designated planning agency for that. And I got word from the consultant this morning because I wanted to use the Board of Commissioners as that. So the, you know, the, the structure of it remains with us instead of a third party. And confirmation came this morning that we are able to do that. And Kim Morley has decided that she could be the contact person for that. I can't be because I'm the CCA, but I can be added in the future after she's been designated. And then I will get all the contact information through that avenue. And so we're moving along with that.
Commissioner Boebert.
As Kim pointed out, we attended the Community Central Michigan District Health Department. They touched base on the H5N1 flu. They talked about radar, radon kits are being presented if you need one. And I talked to Steve Hall yesterday in regard to the, I just want to read this real quick. Says, "I just wanted to make sure you that my community dental centers recently decided to close six centers in our state. Unfortunately, the, the center in Roscommon is one of the centers stated for closure. I know they plan to work with existing patients to help and try my dental care's health work. To my knowledge, Roscommon patients options would include either the MCDC location in Harrison or Dental Clinics North Facility and West Branch." We, I shared that, you and I talked yesterday afternoon. He also said, obviously, that you watch TV, there's a lot of flu epidemic going around the county, so be careful. I attended the Veterans Affairs. They had two meetings. They talked about Direct Care Network for veterans. It's pretty illuminating. But there's the set of a program that if you're disabled, if you need help, that you can actually hire your spouse or you can hire a family member or a neighbor to help you in your day-to-day activities. That was kind of cool. And the, the board actually, they reinstated Donna Maraz as the chair. Tom Shepherd is the vice chair. And Ginger has been hired as a, I think she works 28 hours a week now in the Veterans Office. I met with the Nest Township the other day, like we all do, handed out the strategic plan, gave them copies of that. One of the individuals gave me a call. We had a, had a long, few talk about strategic plan. I met with Diane Reynolds yesterday, about an hour, had a delightful conversation regarding strategic plan. So I think the word's getting out. So I also had manager. Thank you.
Next, we have board comment. Commissioner Morley.
I don't have a lot of others. I think, kind of in lieu of what I was doing, talking to, spent some time in at least trying to go around to some of the departments here to talk about the strategic plan. Did you understand what that message was? What questions do you have? And just getting some feedback. When, I'll save those because I know that we will collect those and we'll start talking about those as we've gathered the things you've heard from townships and whatnot. But just trying to get a sense from our staff here too, what's, what's working so I can share those later. The only other thing I thought I'd bring up is something that's probably coming down from our governor's office around, and Jody, you may know more about this than I do, but the there's some general fund money in this county revenue sharing. So it sounds as if there was going to be an increase, but then they're taking certain things away to where basically it remains flat. That I, is that a great summary? Or not great, but in general, we're not getting more. It's a shell game.
Yeah. Yeah. So there's really no change for all of that.
That's it. Thank you. Commissioner. Um, I would just like to say that as commissioners, that I would really like us to make an effort to come together and develop some sort of hours in the office. There's five of us Monday through Friday. If each of us could pick a day with some hours, that way we can be open to any employees, personnel, anything public. I just think that it would be a benefit to all of us. That's all I have to say. Commissioner Wilson.
Mondays and Tuesdays are best for me.
Public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Danielle Janice, Court Administrator for the District Court. My apologies for not coming up during public comment on agenda items. But because you guys are enabling it to make some amendments or hopefully make some amendments. I did want to respectfully request that in the Earn Sick Time Policy, a some change or multiple changes be made in paragraph three Earn Sick Time accrual in performing calculations of what employees currently receive and have since I began working here 13, 14 years ago. We will be going backwards at a rate of .0334 sick time credits per hour of work. That equates to 60.78 hours annually for an employee that works 1,820 hours a year, which is our, you know, full-time hourly employee. That equates to 8.68 days annually. Currently, employees are awarded 12 days annually of sick time. A day of sick is earned per 30 days of work completed. Now, I know you have to change the language based on the new statute, whether that's done by adjusting the .0334 sick time accrual to .0462. To accomplish the same thing, that's what I would request. I don't think that the county had any intentions of sending employees backwards what they already receive. And taking into consideration that hourly employees have become accustomed to receiving in addition to that one day of sick time per month, 40 hours, use it or lose it. That's being taken away. I think at a minimum, we need to retain the one day of sick time per month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
Do I have to push anything? I just wanted to take a quick few minutes. Yeah, well, to introduce myself again, I'm Rhonda Cross, the Mobility Manager at Roscommon County Transit. I've been out and about at township meetings and such, and it's come to my attention that not everyone knows about our non-emergency medical transportation that we do. We do provide that 24 hours a day, seven days a week to any Roscommon County resident. If someone goes to the hospital in the middle of the night by ambulance, all they have to do is call us at option two. That is the only line that is monitored 24/7. Leave a voicemail. Dispatch will call you back. We get a driver lined up. We'll come and pick you up even in the middle of the night. Under my attention that some ambulances and sheriff's departments are sending cars or vehicles over there to get people from the hospital. And we don't want to pull away from those resources in case we need them here in the county. So that's why we started this. It's very economical for residents now. And I also just wanted to remind you that transportation should be at every table when you're talking about different plans for the county and such. I'm finding through my mobility management position that people don't think about transportation until someone needs it. And it really needs to be embedded into everyone's budgets. For the most part, for the most part, public transportation kind of absorbs those costs that the taxpayers can't pay, that our riders can't pay. And moving forward, I would just like to really have transportation at every table. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Wait till that's passed out.
Insert article in the paper.
Oh, thank you. It was a lot of fun. My granddaughter was like, "I am living history." I said, "Yes, you are." How's that? Can you hear me now? Okay, I know several years ago that animal control changed the way they look at controlling cats. But I think it may need to be revisited. In the spring, we had an orange cat that was wandering around our house. And no big deal until he started spraying my house and my garage. But he was feral and all you have to do is knock on the window and he'd take off. Then a couple of months later, we had a black cat. Then they had kittens. Now we have six cats. And now out of that litter of four kittens, two of them are calico, which means they have a 90% chance of being females. I went to animal control and I was told that they really don't take care of cats anymore. And if I wanted to, I could have them fixed. I had to capture them myself. Keep them for 24 hours, make sure that they didn't eat. Then take them to get fixed and then they bring them back to my house. Well, I don't want six cats at my house. They're spraying. We had a sand pile that my grandson usually plays with his trucks. He can't because it's a huge kitty litter. My yard, every time it rains, smells like a kitty litter. Since this has gone on, I've talked to other people. I know of one lady who is legally blind. And I went over to her house and she has over 30 cats running around her house. She doesn't feed them. They're killing our birds. They're, this summer, I would find chipmunk tails all over my yard. Now that the chipmunks are gone, they're killing birds. They were killing rabbits. I just think that this needs to be revisited. I was given a name of a lady who, Kathy Moberick, who would take care of cats. I called her. She said, "She's over home. There's so many cats, she can't keep up with them." I tried to capture them and tame them, but because they're hiding underneath our shed, I can't get 10 feet and they're gone. So I would seriously ask you folks to reconsider looking at the policy for cats in the county. Thank you. And if you look at this, this is very interesting. A pair of cats in one year can have two litters with 2.8 surviving kittens per litter. So in one year, you could have 12 cats. In two years, 67. Three years, 376. And by the time you get down to eight years, you've got 2,072 cats. Go down to nine, oh, I'm sorry, 2 million. Thank you. 2,022,514 cats. So you can see how in Roscommon County, and if you talk to people, it's out of control. There are neighborhoods that have a lot of wild cats in them and they keep producing. So something's got to be done. And I know people don't like euthanizing. And my husband said, "Well, maybe we can capture them and take them, you know, into the woods someplace." Well, that's cruel too. I mean, you're dumping cats in the woods. All they're doing is just multiplying out there and causing more problems out there. They need to be controlled. This is animal control. They need to be controlled, not spayed and dropped back off, but controlled. They need to be controlled, not spayed and dropped back off, but controlled. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Sorry, Commissioner Wilson, I just had to add this. The filing deadline for the May 5th to have a May 5th special or May, excuse me, May 6th special election. Was yesterday at four o'clock and Roscommon area public schools did file ballot proposal wording. So I will be conducting a May 6th special election. It was too late to put it on my report, so I just wanted to make you aware.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on up.
Good morning, Marcy Dankert County Treasurer. I just want to, as a department head, encourage the commission to please take another look at the earned sick time policy. I also noticed that the accrued sick time hours is going to be going backwards for. Anyone in my office that works a 35 hour work week. And so I'm just asking if you're doing some revisions and reviewing that you take a look at that number also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? With no further public comment, this meeting is adjourned and our next meeting starts at 11 o'clock. Well, I guess I know what we're talking about at our next animal control meeting.
Thousand hours of full time employment?
No, she was saying that they could have grew up to a thousand hours as a full time employee. I don't care what.
It's even where it is, it's very.
I understand you don't accrue as fast with the ones for 30 days, but the person can accrue forever. It's a, yes. There's a couple otherwise. I will send it out to all of the department heads now that I have been instructed to do so and collect comments for you. And I will collect your comments and change them as you decide.
The engineer and the lawyer there at the same time so they can talk. Over the results with the advisory board. The goal is to have the advisory board review. Results. Because right now, all we have is still preliminary because it was such a rush to get everything in. And then after that, we're going to go to Eagle, talk to them about the results. And then between those two, then it will get presented to you guys on the 26th of February. And hopefully a special meeting to go over the advisory board's thoughts. Eagles thoughts and what possible course of actions we the county has going forward.
Is there a time for that you want the special meeting, Chase?
I don't care.
Okay.
This is what it is, I think.
Okay.
The engineer should be able to be here in person. And then I believe Stacy will probably be able to just. If not. I think with that one, most of your questions will probably be engineering based of. What's going on with the water? Why are we seeing this? Why are we seeing that?
Okay.
Funding information. That one about.
It's the interest payment at 57,000.
Okay, so in the compa cost.
Yep.
There was the 57,000.
Yep.
That was set aside because we were unknown, it was unknown of how many people would prepay. That money doesn't go anywhere, it stays in the assessment. So because we had a large amount prepaid. Now there's more money out of that interest that can go towards. Projects or the budget on Houghton Lake. So that money is never gets. It never leaves the bank of Houghton Lake.
Okay.
And then Eagle meeting, like I said, was switched to the 20th. Of this month, the idea is have the advisory board meeting right before that so we can have. Advisory Board's input before going to Eagle.
Do we have a time on that meeting on the 20th?
I think it's either nine or 10 a.m.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'm sure.
Yes.
Like you mentioned, the engineering survey is referring to is. Ready to see who may flood and who may not. For the public understanding.
Okay. Thank you.
So that will be gone over. In. The advisory board meeting, everything will be presented. The idea is not to have, it's just for the advisory board, there'll be no public comment. When it gets presented to the board of commissioners. Then the public can have comment and then we plan to schedule an additional meeting after the board of commissioners meeting. Where the engineer, the lawyer will be there, all the data will be presented, laid out for the public. It'll be similar to the meeting we had at the high school. And the public can ask any question they want. So it's all understood what's going on, like so that there's no. No misinformation or misunderstanding about what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. Lake St. Helen.
All right, uh, boring logs came in. That sand down to about nine feet and then there's about 20 feet of clay, which is a, which is a great thing, gives you a nice. Location to tee in your sheeting, so. I've been talking to Rex, I'm going to walk, talk over with the engineer. I'm thinking um. A vinyl sheeting would be cost effective out there, it'd be light, easy to install and with the. Clay barrier, you don't have to put your sheeting very deep.
Any questions?
And we're still working on eliminating the winter drawdown level.
Yes, so when I talked to Luke about that, what he said is they want to have a preliminary design. About a structure that can maintain. A level which gets rid of the the winter lake level. And then present that the eagle get, see how they feel about it and if they're good. Then they can apply for the permit and apply. For the change and get rid of the winter lake level. They wanted to design something and have Eagle kind of give it. Lasting before they go through the whole process of getting rid of the winter lake level once.
Any other questions? Regarding that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Higgins Lake, um Higgins Lake lake level control structure permit. The drawings, we all received them. They were provided to us by the engineering firm, Crane Newhoff. Basically, what they are showing is placing riprap in a pretty large footprint to protect the footings of the control structure from damage due to scouring. They're not changing any of the gates or how the structure functions. The goal of this project is basically maintenance to keep the structure functioning as it was designed. Does anybody have any questions? The drawings. This is basically what we have asked them to do, so we do have a motion here. To authorize them to go ahead and apply for that permit with Eagle. On today's, if everybody is okay with that.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I do have a question.
Sure.
So is this. Structure as it, to help it stay as it's designed is part of this? We need to do something temporarily until the permanent fix.
Correct.
Is decided upon. Okay, so at least there's action that we're doing something in the interim. That's the purpose, okay, thank you.
Well, we don't have anything listed under unfinished, so we are to our motions and resolutions whenever. Michelle is ready.
Motion number one. Move to approve Prine and Newhoff to proceed with submission of Eagle permit for the Higgins Lake. Level control structure permit includes, excuse me, lake level. Level control structure. Permit includes request to return low flow channel to original assumed elevations by placement of riprap. Project is needed to reduce erosion and protect structure footings.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Melbourne. Morley.
Yes.
Senator.
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Public comment. Do we have any public comment? Come on up and state your name. Make sure the green light is on.
It's there. My name's Dave Bisby, I'm from Old Trail Drive on Houghton Lake. There's been a lot of discussion about the first meeting with Eagle and it didn't go well. All this transparency, none of us have a clue. Where our S A D special assessment money was spent on and what the results were. There's been no information passed on to the public about the results of that meeting. That's shameful. Because you people have spent. Quarter million dollars so far on this project. Doing S A D that shouldn't even have been permitted. Because the transparency that took place at the high school in the first meeting. Was everything but. It was designed, the scam, the taxpayers. And to raise the lake level, but let's not tell them how we're going to do it. And what underhanded means we're going to use. It's shameful. And transparency isn't there. And you people know it. That's even more shameful. That's all I need to say right now. The eyes are watching. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on up and state your name.
Craig Catterman, Houghton Lake. This Eagle meeting, I know you've had one. And I guess I. I did a. Email Jody and she gave me some names of some of the people that attended that meeting. I heard it was by invitation only. Of course, I live on Houghton Lake and what transpires at these meetings is really important to me and my family. It's paid for by, I'm sure this meeting was paid for by my special assessment money. It was a Zoom meeting, usually Zoom meetings are taped. I did ask Jody if there was a copy and she said no. I emailed Eagle, you know, if they had a copy. I probably would have emailed your attorneys from Fahey and Associates, but I was afraid they would charge me. I I protested my special assessment and they they charged me for relief. I guess I wasn't supposed to file in small claims court. I was supposed to file my protest with Circuit Court. Anyway, I believe we are entitled to know what goes on at these Eagle meetings. And to me, it's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. There is probably a record of it, a copy of it. I guess I'm all, thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, with no further public comments, the meeting is adjourned.